It is six oh two and this is October twenty first, twenty twenty five. This is a regular meeting of the common council of the city of Oneonta and I think we call the rule.
Mayor Drennan.
Here.
Councilmember Moja Campoli.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Here.
Councilmember McHugh.
Here.
Councilmember LaFari Shu.
Present.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg.
Here.
Councilmember Matheson.
Here.
If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. So, one of the great pleasures of my time as mayor has been to, on not often enough occasions, to recognize some folks for the wonderful work that they do. And we call this award our Spirit of Oneonta Award because in fact, the folks that we recognize really do present to all of us what that Spirit of Oneonta means. And so, I thank everyone here for their attendance in, as we anticipate, a couple of these recognitions. I want to say that, first off, I want to recognize Frank Russo, a recent recipient of our Spirit of Oneonta Award. And I appreciate your being here in support of these other folks. I want to recognize all of the folks, this is about working with our young people, our next generation, how important that is. And so, from the Yax Youth Center to Angels Daycare, to Bugbee, to of course, the great work that Owl does, to just everybody that has, of course, again, the YMCA, all these folks that have been working to ensure that our next generation is successful, healthy, and is able to really take advantage of all that Oneonta has to offer. And so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a proclamation and then I'm going to come around, actually, maybe I'll come around and read it. And then, I'll ask you to come on up and if you'd like to say a word or two, we'll take some pictures. Sound good? Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright. Get your eyes still head. Those are the soporating three hours sleep. Alright. So, this is the Spirit of Oneonta. And so, proclamation, whereas since its earliest days in nineteen forty seven, when Oneonta policeman and former professional boxer Carl Delverde Senior began volunteering his time to work with young boys during his off-duty hours that they may embrace healthy and well-centered lives. And whereas, physical conditioning and artistic, creative, and sporting activities have been the hallmarks of the Oneonta Boys and Girls Club through these many years since. And whereas, from its original dedication in nineteen sixty eight, through its expansion in nineteen ninety seven to Oneonta's present day, that beautiful building at Seventy River Street has offered a welcome opportunity for fun, community, and solid life lessons for our kids from six to sixteen. And whereas, while art, cooking, woodshop, yoga, dance, and even virtual reality games have been added to boxing training, the Oneonta Boys and Girls Club's commitment to the vision of Carl Delverde Senior has never wavered. And whereas, life for our children and grandchildren is immeasurable and continuously enhanced by the efforts of those we honor today. Now therefore, I, our current mayor of the city of Oneonta, on behalf of its grateful citizens, do hereby proclaim and recognize the leadership of the Oneonta Boys and Girls Club as recipient of the Spirit of Oneonta. Big witness whereof, signature and a seal of the city. And Bob, would you come on up? Now, Bob was very clear to me, there should be nothing in this proclamation that references him. But I think we all know, you all know, that the Oneonta Boys and Girls Club is a reflection of those who are there to guide and nurture the various children, kids that are in the program. And Bob, I think deserves a round of applause from everybody. There you go. That doesn't surprise me much. Yes.
Steve Fogg, you can listen to Gary Delo, he's been at the club for forty-five years.
There you go. Okay.
All I have is your kid trials.
While we're doing this, I just want to thank everybody for being here and mayor, viewing your and your common council for acknowledging us for all that we do. And all we're really doing is carrying on, carrying on Carl Delverde's dream of what he created and try to be stewards every single day for the kids that were privileged to serve. So, and we have a couple of board members here, Buzz Southern and Spotty. They're the two leaders of the organization that provide us guidance and governance to do what we do. Right here. We're gonna turn around for Kerry, if you don't mind.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have another. This Spirit of Oneonta Award proclamation reads as follows. Whereas for generations, Oneonta's young people have benefited by the commitment of our community to ensuring the health and well-being of its every member. And whereas, in these days of increasing pressures on those navigating their teenage years and early twenties, we have two distinct but collaborative enterprises provided by Bordeaux, the Oneonta Teen Center and Club Odyssey, which have grown from dream to reality to provide connection and a safe place for young people to be themselves and grow in healthy community. Whereas, the roles played by the staff and especially its leaders, program manager Kader Carpenter and clubhouse manager Ian Austin, in creating an environment of mutual respect, civility, and personal growth have had profound effect on the lives of our next generation. And whereas, the Teen Center and Club Odyssey are also among the most fun places a kid of any age might want to hang out. And whereas, the opportunities for creativity and entertainment are limited only by the bounds of ideas and include skate jams, outdoor movies, karaoke, band performances, and dances, and anything else that can be dreamed up by young people and supported by people who truly care. Now therefore, I, Mark Drennan, mayor of the city of Oneonta, on behalf of its grateful citizens, do hereby proclaim and recognize Bordeaux and especially the staff and members of the Oneonta Teen Center and Club Odyssey as recipients of the Spirit of Oneonta. Alright, a couple of words.
We do have a couple more staff at Club Odyssey right now, keeping the place open. So, it's just like the Boys and Girls Club, it is a big team credit for this award. We are very honored and grateful. We do our best to represent Oneonta, to sell Oneonta, to keep the youth, to moving to Oneonta. That's a vision we share with common council. So, we're big promoters of Oneonta. And I want to take this opportunity to not only thank you, Mark and the council for the award, but also kind of use it as an opportunity to just kind of give an update that in recent, this past year, we've consolidated resources. The Teen Center has come over to Club Odyssey and is now on Water Street. We're extending it to Main Street. We're putting everything all under one group. So, this is a very nice closure to the chapter of the Oneonta Teen Center, I think. And they look forward to what we have in store for Club Odyssey. So, keep an eye on the Main Street location, right next to Tino's. We've got some work going in there now, should be open very soon. Skate jam coming up this Saturday on Water Street. So, if you're able to come out there, see what we're all about. I don't know, that's the policy.
I'm a Boys and Girls Club kid. And I wouldn't be in this line of work if it wasn't for Carl Delverde Junior. And the time and effort he put into my life when I was young. And I didn't realize it when I was that age, that I wanted to grow up to be just like you. And when I got back from college, I was looking to start a teen center. And I remember I went to him first and told him, and he said, "Oh, so you're the competition." And I could never compete with Carl. I had to try my best to be the best mentor and support system that I could for the young people of this town, because that's what I had. And I think I turned out alright. And what you guys did there inspired me and people like Kaler to keep helping. Things we do around here matter, especially when it comes to young people. And at times, when more and more, it seems like we have to pay just to exist in spaces. Places like this, Boys and Girls Club, they allow places for young people to be themselves, to exist at little to no cost. And I'm here to tell you, you can't beat it. When you see those kids on the street, you will never, I never stopped being proud of them. And, you know, I remember them all. You know, working with young people is one of the most rewarding things that any of us can ever do. And the only thing that it does is make our community and the environment that they're growing up in better. So, if you can help any of our programs in support or just recommending, you know, people to our doors, we are here to just be their mentor and support the young people of this community, because that's where our heart and our passion is. The building may have changed, but the heart and the staff remain dedicated to the young people of this town.
Thank you all, thank you all so much. That ends our meeting? Alright. Now, we're gonna move on now to our council member discussion items, which is something that we have been doing these last several months, giving the council an opportunity. If there's something they want to bring forward while we still have a smattering of people in the gallery. And Katie?
I'd like to talk about establishing a procedure for the city to propose, adopt, some guidelines around trick-or-treating in our community. I know there's a lot of confusion, when, what day, what hours, every year. And it also kind of coordinates with the parade and the downtown trick-or-treating. And so, we're too late for that, that's all set this year. But I would still like to have a quick conversation about potentially adopting some formal trick-or-treating hours within the city and then publicizing those so that there's, we can eliminate that confusion for all the parents and grandparents who may be in Facebook groups right now and chats, asking each other if anybody knows what's going on. So, I know that the downtown trick-or-treating is happening from four to six, I think, on the thirty-first, and then the parade is at six thirty, six o'clock. So, that makes it tough. I don't know, what does everybody think? Could we do maybe like a little bit before that and put kind of an end time of, you know, nine thirty, two o'clock? I don't know what anybody thinks.
Do you think this is an opportunity for maybe Community Wellness or one of our committees to actually take a solid look at this?
I do think so. And I would have loved for the quality of life.
Oh, is that what you guys talked about before the meeting?
At it. But unfortunately, it did not make it onto their agenda at the last meeting. And so, that's why I'm opening it up now.
There was an email, I promised him we would discuss it, and then Elaine reminded me as we're walking out the door that we forgot to discuss it.
So, is there a sense that with Halloween, what, nine days away, something like that? That this is working within a timeframe that's going to be applicable to this year? Or is this something that we should really maybe potentially look at being either the bailiwick of community wellness or the quality of life and infrastructure?
Well, so if I could be clear, I think that better coordination with the downtown trick-or-treating and the parade and the city and Halloween and all of that, I think needs to happen much sooner than this. But I don't think that it's too late for us to push out some messaging about trick-or-treating in Oneonta, and the city of Oneonta will be on Halloween from four to nine, or whatever, you know.
That would mean that the parade has to be the same time every year.
No, I just mean this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, just this year. And then, each year, we could, because Halloween's on a different night of the year. Every, or every year, a different night of the week, every year. And so, I think a deeper look could be, could be taken at whether, like, when the parade is gonna be, when the downtown trick-or-treating is gonna be, when neighborhood trick-or-treating is going to be. And potentially, those things should be at separate times. I'm hearing actually desperately from parents that those things should be at separate times. But it's too late for that this year. They're all gonna be on the same night. Halloween's a Friday night. I think each year's kind of case by case because it changes. And sometimes it's on a Tuesday, and you know, what are you gonna do then? But, um, but yeah, so I would love to just address, like, this year kind of in a bubble. If we were able to say, we think that's trick-or-treating in the city should be from X, Y, you know, X time to X time, and then we can just put out, you know, some media around that.
So, just my opinion for what that's worth, it's just that...
Could we just chat about it as a council?
By all means, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure, certainly. Does anyone have anything to bring to it? Yes, Don?
It's a question, have we had incidents that were of concern at all related to trick-or-treating?
Are you asking me?
Sure.
I'm not, this isn't in response to incidents, it's in response to clarity for people who take little people trick-or-treating. Yes.
Mike?
I think it would be great to have a community agreed upon schedule. I'm not sure that council is the right body to do that, but I think that we could set the wheels in motion so that people from the community have that discussion between now and next summer so that we can't have it on a community agreement next year. But as far as this year, if we can say something.
Scott, do you have something?
No, the only thing I got is, I know historically Halloween's always been Halloween night in the city. So, I don't know. Like, I guess, I understand some of what you're saying, Katie, is are we just trying to get the messaging out every year that it's at this time, in that we have a curfew at this time so everything stops, everybody knows and it's like from start at four, gets done at ten, hit whatever neighborhood you want, type thing? I guess, that's my question.
That's sort of the idea.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it wouldn't be like a curfew that I would expect OPD to enforce, like, "Oh, you're out trick-or-treating, you must be up to no good." But, um, but I think it just gives people, like, I live on a busy street, so knowing, like, "Okay, it's ten, I'm gonna shut my light off because trick-or-treating is over," right? Or, you know, telling my anxious kid who wants to get going at three o'clock, like, "No, it doesn't start till four." Or, you know, I just think it kind of eases a lot of that confusion right now, it's just more coordinated. And it is something that in parent circles has been talked about for a long time. You know, I know that there's an organization, I think it's the Chamber who's doing the parade, and the downtown businesses put together the downtown trick-or-treating, that's all in concert. I think the thing that's missing, the piece that's missing, and so respectfully I disagree, Mike, is that there's no sort of like municipal kind of coordination to say, like, "Okay, so our trick-or-treating is on Halloween from this time to this time." And maybe it's that every year. But I think it's actually pretty common for municipalities to say, "This is when trick-or-treating is going to be." So...
Shannon, did you have something?
I think, I think I've mentioned it before, I don't know if this is a thing, but the, like, having an app that shows the houses that are gonna be trick-or-treatable.
I'm so glad that you brought that up. I just started a map in the, for the, no, I just did it for trick-or-treating as well.
Oh.
I can share a link if people want to add, if people want to add their houses. But yeah, I agree, I think that's really helpful.
So, the thing that, if, most of, oh, Glenn, go ahead.
It's so, I agree that we need to have some kind of uniform messaging out there because as a, as someone that wants to participate, I don't have young children anymore, but I'd like to participate. We actually don't know when the kids are going to come out. Is it at four o'clock or is it after the parade? Generally, we put candy out and decorations and whatnot, you don't know. So, I agree that there should be a uniform messaging out there for when you can go citywide trick-or-treating. I don't know how many we can get on the app. I think we struggle for Flash Vogue and some other things. So, I don't want to pin all my hopes on an app that gets us there, but I'd do it. Maybe start with Flash Vogue.
Katie's run a successful yard sale thing for her ward, that was, went well. So, it seems to work. So, is there a way that they can access it?
Yeah, so, it's just a Google map that I have, I have to invite, well, I don't have to invite people individually, but I have a link. If you go to my face, my council Facebook page, there's a link where you can click and add yourself. And I, just to be very transparent, I did start it for like the center of city neighborhood because I grew up where I live and there used to be a ton of trick-or-treating. We had the whole aura, you know, it was great, it was a little spooky, weird neighbors, everybody, there were a ton of lights. It's not like that anymore. And I've heard that the West End is the best place to go trick-or-treating, which I just don't think is true.
Now you want to have a competition.
So, I started the, I started the map so that I can promote that there are a lot of great places to go trick-or-treating in my neighborhood, but I would absolutely be willing to open it up citywide if people wanted to add themselves. In fact, I think I did just have somebody in the West End put their house on there.
There you go.
Delete, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Six wards will you wait.
I know, well, see, I mean, and, and actually, so, someone did say, you know, "Are you gonna do this?" And I was like, "You can add your house if you want to." But, so, um, yeah, no, I agree. I think just, um, yeah, just trying to make it a more coordinated thing.
So, Mike?
Oh, what I said before, notwithstanding the one issue that I feel like is considered an issue is because kids trick-or-treat at the parade on the same night, that the houses close to Main Street just get masked with kids and run out of candy and like can't, can't keep up. And up where I live, you know, we like kind of sit by the door and hope for a knock.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, maybe this would turn that around.
So, having, so, yeah, my point is, if parade was, say, on a Saturday and trick-or-treating was whatever day was Halloween.
Actually, Halloween.
Yeah.
It would disperse.
That's kind of my end goal.
So, if, if all the councils more or less weighed in, so my thinking, again, what that might be worth. Did somebody else have something?
If you had anything you want to say.
I mean, for this year, I think it, you know, even when it came up earlier, it was a little too late to research and act on for this year. As far as moving forward, I do tend to think that things like the Halloween parade that are planned by another organization, I think that's gonna be difficult for us to, you know, tell them when to have it, because I'm more inclined to let the volunteers plan those activities that they have taken on. But as far as timing, I think that's, you know, worthwhile looking at, you know, a universal timing for the city.
I'm happy to talk about it in the Quality of Life Committee.
So, what I would suggest would be as you reach the leaders of your wards, mind you, the elected leaders of your wards, you can do as Katie's doing, and you might even double down on that. And we suggest, I, your council member, suggest that you follow this timeline. And all of the council members perhaps might feed both the request to their constituents and then that information to Katie if you're, in fact, in control of a Google map that you might be able to add things to, which would be kind of great to have kind of an indication throughout the city as to where we have trick-or-treaters. So, that might be something. And then, of course, for the long term, you know, quality of life and infrastructure, it could be eventually something that community wellness gets themselves involved in, but we find ourselves with something that makes some sort of sense as we move into next year. But in the meantime, this year, yes, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask, like, you taking that on, you importing everybody's stuff in there? Like timelines, what is that gonna take you?
Well, so I'm happy to share the link for the map and then people can add themselves. But to be clear, what I'm asking for is a city of Oneonta statement that trick-or-treating citywide is from four to ten, or whatever. I don't know, I don't, that seems like maybe we're not gonna get there, which is kind of surprising. But if that's what it is, then I can put it out there for this year. But, I mean, no one knows where their ward boundaries are. So, saying trick-or-treating in the fourth ward is from four to ten is a little, and also, I'm not, it's not my chief dumb, you know? So, what I was really hoping for was like, you know, some agreement from council that we have some semblance of organization.
Yes.
Yeah, I do, like I said, I do think it's worth considering. I just think we need time to, you know, think about this. And it's a very short timeline to announce something new. And I think what we can do at this point, the best thing for this year is to support what is already existing. And, you know, as far as that map, I will definitely check that out and share that around.
Okay.
Terrific.
Can I just say one more thing? Because I, just to be clear, I'm not saying that we should reschedule the parade. What I'm asking for is that we say, "You can trick-or-treat in Oneonta from X to Y." And I think that there's plenty of time for an infographic to go out and that people will generally be respectful of that because they're pretty much asking for it. So, I don't know that that needs like deeper research. I think, you know, anecdotally, I live on Center Street, people usually, the littlest ones come around three thirty, and then by ten o'clock, it's like teenagers, and I still answer the door and give out candy, but it's not like consistent. So, I mean, genuinely, I think, like, if we were to say, three thirty to nine thirty, or four to ten, or whatever you want it to be, it can just be that and we can see how it goes. And it doesn't have to be until the end of time, but...
So, you're just saying, put it out this year on the council?
Yeah. That's my, that's my wall.
Is that a motion?
Our motion.
That we establish a time?
From three thirty to nine thirty?
I think we should do ten.
Three thirty to ten.
I have a teenager.
Yeah. Okay, I would be open to, it's on a Friday night too, so like, ten.
So, do you have a second?
I mean, I seconded it.
You seconded it?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course.
Can, can I get some sense of what the motion is going to be?
That we're going to establish times for trick or treating.
When you say establish, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it a recommendation, is it a thought, is it a concept?
I guess it's a recommendation, I mean, this isn't like a foreign thing, like, communities do this all the time, they say, this is when trick or treating is, that's all we're trying to do.
They, they, if, if you wanna make a recommendation, but if you're saying that this is when it's gonna happen, what happens if it doesn't happen during that? Are we gonna enforce it?
No, we're not, I'm.
Oh, my gosh, I, we're not organized, forget it, like, trying to make us organized, but we're not organized, so let's move on.
So, alright, then.
Let's move on, I'll put it on my map.
Cecily, do you have any?
Well, I just had a question, uh, in terms of what it would mean to tell people this is when trick or treating occurs, if it happens in your private home. That was my only kind of hesitation with it, it's sort of like, you're telling people, you know, if it's a private, I can give out candy whenever I want, to whoever I want on my private property, so I was just curious, kind of, what, what are we telling people?
Yeah, we're just recommending it?
It's not a law, you guys, it's just a community-like organization, like, i- it's fine.
Yeah.
It's fine.
But again, the recommendations from the, um, uh, from the council members have value. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to add, you know, I understood that the, uh, you know, that the focus was on the, the trick or treating time. Um, I have not heard feedback about this issue particularly, and I would like the opportunity to ask folks in my ward for feedback about this as well.
Okay, very good. Okay, um, I think, um, at this point.
You have an active motion on the floor.
Oh, did, did we have a second?
You have a second?
Motion to table.
There hasn't been a motion.
There has, there was a motion and a second.
To do what?
To establish three thirty to ten o'clock for trick or treating in Oneonta.
And, and who seconded it?
Katie. Suggested.
Whose motion was it?
Jenny.
Just recommended, yes.
Alright, so there's a motion on the floor, I think we may have, um, finalized discussion on it?
I, I don't care. I don't care, I can't believe. I'm still not certain, I guess, you know, based on the, the, you know, where the conversation has gone, you know? I- it's like, is that just to, it, you know, do we need a motion if we just wanna advertise that this is when?
No, we don't.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, that's all.
No, we did not. Okay.
Then I rescind my motion.
She's rescinding the motion.
Okay.
Alright, um, anybody else have anything, yes, yes.
So, then would it be a resol- like, resolution that we're putting forward?
I, 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 I feel like there's a recommendation that there's some consensus on, and that is probably what, i- in this moment, uh, we could hope to accomplish.
And would we vote on that recommendation?
I don't know that that needs, I don't think that requires a vote, there's, there's a sense of council that, um, it'd be nice if there was some.
Guidelines?
Yeah, some, some strategizing around when people are trick or treating and where. And that includes downtown, that includes the parade, where everybody goes to the parade, and then their houses are left with candy on the front porch, you know? I mean, we all, we all deal with the same thing, so there would be, it'd be great, frankly, it'd be great, to have some sort of an organized. I, I'm a little uncomfortable at anything that looks like a curfew.
Right.
But, as a suggestion, and, um, and I think you've started the ball rolling, and, and although I've said it twice, and I will again, you guys are leaders in your wards, and I think your, your opinions, um, will carry some weight among those who, um, who follow you, and I do think that they will. So, um, let's move on to anything that, uh, any other council member may wish to bring forward, otherwise, we're gonna allow Kevin Gramps to have his presentation, yes, Scott?
So, I'm reading this off my email, so I make sure I get this right.
Yes.
The Soc- Socis Commons team will be doing an engagement session on November nineteenth from four to six thirty at the Foothills Performing House. That'd be the RSS proposed project down in the Six Ward, so anyone in the Six Ward wants to go down and talk with them and find out everything and anything. I believe they're gonna have different stations set up.
Okay.
I am just a messenger. I am trying to be representative, I'm just trying to get information out and about, so.
We got you, Scott.
Uh, November nineteenth from four to six thirty at Foothills.
So, first off, please send me that, Mike.
Yes.
Sure.
There you go. Second off, this is probably gonna go to our city attorney. So, what I understand is New York State legislation has changed in, and when a local elections will happen. Um, the way I'm understanding it, is it's gonna be shifted. It's only towns and not cities?
It has nothing to do with the city, or villages, only towns.
Only towns and villages or just?
Only towns?
Only towns.
Villages and cities are different entities.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Only five counties to off-year elections, they're all gonna be put under the four-year cycle during major national elections.
Right, because this came out the other day, and I know we've been taking phone calls from constituents about.
Only towns.
What's on our, our. Okay, um, I'm gonna assume that we're gonna get an update from the mayor and our city administrator about the refuge on Water Street through the two motions that we had.
The refuse.
Do you wanna wait till then?
Sorry, the what, huh?
The update on where we're at for refuge collection on Water Street. Can you do that at those two?
Yeah, yeah, that's in the, you know, in the agenda.
Correct, alright. Um, and then, given that at SUNY Oneonta campus, we were provided an opportunity as a community to come and voice our concerns about the NISIC rates, I did take that opportunity, I did get to speak. But, I'd actually like to start having a conversation, I don't know which committee you'd like to put it in, Mayor, but, um, I think through the use of maybe NICOM after our committee forces us out, is, um, what does it look like for cities and villages who have the legal right to control utilities, actually have a conversation? Because our constituents are getting hit multiple times, right, so, they're getting hit in their personal house, most people that testified that day are saying that their rates doubled to tripled. Um, they're getting hit by the stores that they visit, because the product prices are going up, and then they're getting hit by the City of Oneonta, because our taxes are going up to pay. Uh, I think Jenny and I, we talked yesterday, she's put in our, our budget proposal, uh, thirty-three percent for electric and thirty-five percent for gas, or somewhere similar to the exact numbers. But, um, thoughts?
Well, in terms of where this.
We're good?
Will you tell me, David?
Huh, can we legally do it? We can.
I, I'm gonna answer your question.
So, yeah, so, can we start having a conversation, because the village of New Berlin, um, uh, Jamestown, Messina, they have their own electric companies within the municipality. So, based on that, and I have kept digging, can a city start having that conversation, right? And so, I know that it's a, it's a mountain that we're looking at, so, it's probably Mount Everest, if you wanna give an analogy of what that would look like, but it'd be simple, maybe in two years' time, it would force NISIC to start having a conversation of coming to the table when, say, Ni- NICOM, right, and for the folks that don't know, that's the New York State Conference of Mayors, so that's all of the villages and cities combined that have an opportunity as one voice to say, hey, I know it's enough. Cause if you guys don't know, their profit margin this year alone is three hundred and thirty million dollars, and it's projected on the new rates to be four hundred and twenty million dollars per year. That's their profit.
You're doing alright.
Well, I was just gonna say that in addition to that conversation about challenging NISIC, I think it's really important to have a conversation as a council about what we're doing in terms of supporting renewable energies and alternative energies to gas, and, um, as electric bills and other kinds of energy bills increase, the discussion has to include renewable energies, so, I wanna just put that forward, and that's something that we have a continual conversation about at the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, and anybody on council is welcome to come to our meetings, which means once, once a month, on the last Friday of every month. So, that to me is an important dimension that I think often, um, at least in New York State, we include here.
Right. I think, too, with the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, we might find ourselves direction within, uh, to address, you know.
That's correct.
Len's larger point.
And, and where we have the actual conversation about where on a local level can we find sources for renewable energies. And in fact, that's what I'm gonna be talking about in terms of our finance committee discussion from last week.
Okay. Anything else?
Right, but it also leads to the bigger question of why NISIC hasn't invested in their infrastructure. If we wanted to recruit, um, light manufacturing to our rail yards, can we actually supply the needed, um, electricity or gas? And so, you know, I'd, I'd like to have a conversation of forcing NISIC to, a certain percentage of their profit margin go towards infrastructure automatically, but, um, that's me.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had something to add to that, because I was unable to attend the in-person hearing, but they had one, um, NISIC, there was a hearing this afternoon, and there's actually one happening right now. Um, so I was able to listen in to the online one this afternoon, and I just wanna echo, you know, what, you know, Councilmember Carson said as far as the concerns that folks raised, you know, concerns from the elderly, people on, um, various forms of public support, um, and so, everything that I heard from the, the homeowners who were there was not in support. The only ones who actually supported the rate increase were manufacturers.
Sure.
So, I just want, you know, that to be known, um, and there is still the opportunity where folks can still provide, um, comments if they want, and I know that our clerk had posted the information on the city Facebook page, if anybody would like to get that.
Cecily, within the context of the Climate Smart Community, um, meetings that you have, and then potentially even the next one coming up.
Yes.
Can this be something that you bring forward within the context of that meeting, uh, in hopes of generating some sort of a proposal for an action of whatever sort by council?
Sure. And that would be specifically what, just to be clear, with the charge, NISIC overpricing?
Referencing, referencing, yes. Yes, I'm gonna continue with Len, and then we'll go to Don.
Cecily, do you remember which page it was on the ninety-nine pages of our agenda, where it talked about the solar farm potential, that, I guess your task force?
The heat.
What's the name of the company?
Acadia.
Acadia?
Mm, yes.
That's the name, okay, so that's the one with the solar array, potentially down by the, uh, school?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, the, uh, fields, some former soccer fields there.
I don't know if everybody. Correct, I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see that within our agenda, but, um.
Well, I can talk a little bit about it, and it's gonna be kind of something that we're gonna revisit, uh, both with the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, and then eventually in council. So, it's, it'll be a kind of ongoing conversation.
Okay, is that something you guys are talking immediately about?
Yes, on, on this coming Monday.
This coming Monday?
Yeah, I'm gonna review their proposal.
Yeah, alright, so, Len, if you're, if you're set, I'm gonna go to Don.
Well, I have two questions, uh, what, what time and location is the, uh, Climate Smart Communities meeting?
We meet in the mayor's conference room Mondays, uh, the, the last Monday of every month, this ye- this month, or I'd say this year, but for October, it's, uh, the twenty-seventh at six thirty, yeah.
Um, earlier you said Fri- the last Fridays, I thought you said, now you say Mondays?
No, no, I, no, Monday, it's always Monday.
Thank you.
Yep, the last Monday on the room.
Right, the last Monday, and it begin at, it's gonna be Novem- uh, October, rather, twenty-seventh at six.
Thirty, yep.
Thank you, the other question is, I, I understand that electric utilities and gas utilities are regulated by the state, and I haven't heard any discussion in either the media or here tonight about what the state is doing when it comes to, because they set the rates, does anybody know anything about that?
Scott?
Yeah, so, if you follow the news and stuff, Hokel, Governor Hokel points aboard, and they regulate it, it's, it's the regulator, so, and then they sit there and they come down through and they regulate, yes, they're gonna raise them, they'll go along and raise them or no, and they're gonna tell NISIC, whoever the governing body is, can't. So far, they, they've authorized two, I believe it's two raises, and are contemplating another one, so.
And you said?
Len.
I have here the answer to that, too, actually, because these hearings were actually held by the New York State Public Service Commission on the proposed NISIC rates, so.
Okay, alright, so that answers your questions, and that, that, um, takes care of most of, uh, the council's, um, discussion items. Uh, Kevin Gramps is the managing director of Grow America, was, was the, um, um, National Development Council, am I right? That's, I've got that right, so as I said, literally, I did not get any sleep. Um, Kevin has actually driven four and a half hours today, uh, to join us to make a personal presentation of what Grow America might be able to do for the city of Oneonta. And Kevin, um, first of all, thank you so much for, for being here with us, and, uh, I'm gonna let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for inviting me to, uh, spend the evening with you tonight. Uh, not the, I won't be too long. I had a beautiful ride up here, um, beautiful ride, uh, through the height of foliage, so it was thoroughly enjoyable ride, so I appreciate the opportunity, man, uh, because I haven't been up too much in the last week or so, so it was nice to see the changing leaves. Um, I have to say, I've been to my share of town council, city council meetings, and this is one of the very first that, uh, when I walked in, it was standing room only, and within three minutes, there was standing ovations, so that really demonstrated the spirit of Oneonta, which is the award that you gave out, so that was quite encouraging and nice to, uh, nice to start off, because I've been to many city council meetings where it was not too crowded, and within a few minutes, there was arguments or fights, so, it was a pleasant change of pace here. Um, so, um, if, if you could advance that, um, perhaps I, I could just start with a, a little bit about, uh, Grow America. Um, uh, and Grow America is a nearly sixty-year-old, uh, national nonprofit, we were founded in the late sixties, um, with a very simple mission. There was a whole lot of strife going on, uh, at that point, and fires burning, and things, unfavorable things happened in America's cities. So, uh, the founders of the organization, uh, figured it was, it was time to create an organization to bring in private capital, uh, to attract private capital into underserved, uh, areas throughout the country. So, we started, our first initiative was in Bedford-Syverson-Berklin, and then we expanded to many cities around the country, and we started, uh, a few presidential initiatives through the federal government, where we brought the federal resources into many communities around the country. Um, and then we realized that there was a need to train local officials, um, because, uh, a lot of the local officials well-meaning individuals at the economic and community development level, and then we created a national professional training program in economic and community development finance. Um, uh, because there's a whole range of tools in terms of funding resources that were available, uh, and, uh, we, we set out to provide some advisory services to m- communities, and then professional training, so that if there is a way to attract private capital through a range of public and state resources, um, that we would be the ones to help train, uh, uh, those local officials. So, we've probably trained about sixty thousand individuals through our professional training program, in some shape or manner, not going through our whole certification, but some level of training. And then we've worked with communities around the country, so, at any given time, we're about in a hundred communities around the country. Given the fact that we're based in New York City, we've al- always been very active in New York State, so we've, we've worked throughout New York State and throughout the country, but we've always had perhaps more of a concentration of our activities in, in New York State than, than elsewhere. Um, and it was just a happenstance that the president of our company was, uh, is, is a alum of Hartwood College, and he was here over the, over the spring, and had the fortune of meeting Mayor, Mayor Drennic, and, um, also mentioned the fact that we have several interns that, uh, are down in our New York City office in the summertime, uh, and, uh, get, getting some skill building, and getting some practical exposure, so we really enjoyed having the opportunity to have, uh, Hartwood, Hartwood students as interns. I myself have been here many times over the years, uh, as a visitor of SUNY Oneonta, where a lot of my friends had attended, and then I came up here for, annually, for a baseball tournament, uh, in Cooperstown and, 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 and Oneonta, so I've, uh, been a long admirer of, of, of the city, and had the opportunity to walk the streets with, um, City Administrator, uh, Matisse, and Mayor Drennic, and, uh, Judy, uh, uh, City Planner, uh, and really had the opportunity to see some of the op- uh, to see the opportunities that exist here for, uh, new investment, uh, and a market create, market, uh, changing, uh, in, investment opportunities. So, I personally, um, I'm the managing director for our advisory services, so I manage a team of professionals that work with a series of cities, and, uh, and we also work with, directly with nonprofits. And really, what, what our, our approach is to, is to help our clients get their prioritized projects done, as well as, uh, a- address some of the challenges and problems that they have. And, uh, we do that by listening, understanding those opportunities, understanding those, uh, challenges, and, uh, being responsive and. responsive in terms of either establishing some programs or attracting interest based upon your, your existing assets here. It's a nice, walkable community, beautiful historic fabric with a whole lot of neighboring, nearby assets. So there's a lot to work with. And so my, my thought was to, so just to wrap up with overall, so our mission is to attract private investment into those underserved communities for the purposes of creating homes, affordable market rental homeownership, creating jobs through our lending, lending efforts, and then also we have, the overall overarching mission is to provide sustainable community and a diverse economy. And how we do that has changed over the years. Our mainstay has been advisory services, but we've also created a whole range of products that we activate on an as-needed basis. So we're a lender, we're an investor, we're a developer, and then we're also that professional training. So we have a pretty diverse set of skills and, skills and, or services and programs, but what we do in individual communities is a function of your opportunities and, and your issues or your challenges. So maybe you go to the next slide. And as I mentioned, it, it's really a combination of capacity building and then financing and development. So we have a lending arm. We actually have two different community development financial institutions, CDFIs. So it's a non-bank lender. We've done over eight hundred million dollars of lending throughout the country, a lot of it here in New York State. And we have a, we have a program, one of the CDFIs that have a partnership program with the state to do lending in, in New York State communities. We were one of the few among four different CDFIs that did lending post-COVID, and we've continued that lending through a partnership with New York State and other CDFIs throughout the, throughout the, throughout the state. So we lend in the communities in which we're active. We lend in the communities in which we have relationships. We also have an investment arm that we raise a few hundred million dollars of investment through our bank partners. So they invest in our fund to purchase tax credits, and we pass on the tax credits to them, which are dollar-for-dollar deductions. So we invest in both housing credits and historic credits. You have a nice historic fabric here, a lot of developments have been done with historic credits. There's an opportunity to raise equity for, for housing development through the housing tax credit. And then in certain incident, so we, we've, we've done about a one and a half billion dollars of investment for housing through those tax credits. And then we also have a development arm, so we've developed a lot of real estate on behalf of our municipal clients to lessen the burdens of government. So we've done a lot of public facilities, municipal centers, as well as housing that we do in partnership with not-for-profits that need additional support in terms of their capacity building for developing housing. But we try to draw upon our experience as a developer, as a lender, as an investor to, with our advisory services. And then I like to think of our work in, with communities as the intermediary between the community, the city, and the development and the investment community. Because we understand what the developers and the investors are looking for in terms of financial metrics, and then we also understand sometimes the imbalance, the financial imbalance of oftentimes development costs are a lot more than what it's going to be worth on, on an as-complete basis. So you have to address that challenge in order to attract that investment. And the interest, it starts with interest, then you have to figure out the puzzle for assembling a capital structure. So for many of these developments that we've been involved with in certain marketplaces, you have capital structures that are four or six sources, eight sources, though most complicated ones, I've been involved with that, twenty diff, twenty-three different funding sources, and let's hope that is not necessary here. But the developers and the community, everyone needs to recognize a whole range of resources. And the good news now in New York State is that there's probably a, the widest range of resources available for this type of work in terms of pre-development planning. You receive the downtown revitalization initiative, DRI, one of the very first few. So Oneonta's efforts have been recognized by the state, and you've gotten a few resources to get things going in the downtown. It's an opportunity to leverage that previous investment from the state to attract further investment from federal resources, state resources, to attract that additional private investment. You had a good story to tell. A good story to tell is, and you also have municipally-owned parcels. Site control is the most important thing to attract investment. Instead of the developers having to go and assemble all of it, if you have a few municipal sites, that's going to attract interest. And then you have to put on the table what your resources are to work for, and share some of your vision, share what you want to, what you'd like to see in the downtown and throughout the city. So if you go to the next slide, yeah, one more after that. And here's the thing, when our approach in working with our clients, we want to listen. We want to listen to your, your issues, your challenges, and your opportunities, so that we can help create solutions to support the positive change in the community. So there's a lot of proof of concept that we've been working with in other communities. And since we're working in a hundred different communities at any given time, what we like to do is to draw upon what works and the best, best in field to draw upon and to bring in, in new marketplaces. So you have a lot going for you, you've had a lot of resources in terms of DRI and other state assistance previously to work with. And then hopefully, we work towards getting to those grindbreakings that you've had, many, but there, there could be others. So that, that shot there is grindbreak or ribbon cutting, that it was a grindbreaker, but it really was a ribbon cutting because it was done. So with one of the oldest mill buildings in, in the country that was sat vacant for two, two decades, and we came up with a program, a program and a capital structure that covered the hundred and thirty-five million dollar development cost through equity off of historic credits, housing credits, and a few other resources that we had to, to assemble to completely revitalize that, that, that mill town in one of the communities in which we worked. Okay. So again, I had the opportunity to walk the streets, walk the downtown, and, you know, we, we knew of the, the development opportunity for which there was a proposal a few months ago. But you have two, two properties that are mostly surface parking, not the highest and best use. You know, certainly you want public parking, but public parking can be done and accommodate additional uses. So for us, that seems like an opportunity for mixed use, mixed income. That mixed income could be home ownership and rental. Mixed use is a little bit of a challenge because it's harder to attract investment for retail, but it's an important part of, and live, and live it in the street with ground floor retail. So it's an important part of a programmatic. So there's the opportunity to perhaps capture what your assets are, capture what your vision is, and put out a solicitation that starts with an RFQ, and I'll go through, go to the next slide. Yeah, so, so those are some of the things that you could put out in terms of something that would seemingly work for those two municipally-owned sites, mixed use, mixed income, civic improvements, the replacement of the parking, and then that all works because this is a very walkable downtown. So mixed use, mixed income, walkable, it, it all makes sense. And this is really the area of expertise that my team has been focusing on, is these recreating the downtown marketplaces, recreating and energizing downtowns through these mixed use, mixed income approaches. It's always, it's challenging because the development costs often exceed that valuation, and then you have to come up and you assure developers, developers are going to look at communities that invest in themselves. But you guys have invested in yourselves through DRI and other investments downtown. So that's, that's good because it's going to capture interest. And then you want to put on the table what are the, some of the resources that are available in terms of tax credits, in terms of financial advantages such as, you know, the opportunity zone just got re-extended and other federal tax credits that just got made permanent. So there's a lot of resources to work with. So you just have to create that vision for the developers and then ask them to respond to. And we, we like to think, if you go to the next slide, we like to think that the two-step process is a little bit more, is perhaps a better approach, because with an RFQ, you want to get, you want to be able to make sure that you're dealing with qualified developers who have done this type of work successfully. But then with the, in addition to the qualifications, you ask for a little bit of their vision, what they're thinking about in terms of what they see on the site. And then once you have shortlisted a set of qualified developers, then you ask them to really roll up their sleeves to come up with their detailed proposal on how they would manage to finance it. And every developer will have perhaps a different vision and a different approach to finance the development, whether it be, and, and I think you also want to state your priorities. Because, you know, where, oh, costs are high right now, and truthfully, it would be a lot easier to, and your, your proposal involved the use of housing tax credits on all affordable development. And that's probably a, that's probably an easier, easier development to assemble a capital structure. But if you want mixed income, you have to really stress the importance of mixed income. If you want a mixed use, you have to state the importance of the mixed use, because the developers would usually go the, you know, the, the route that involves the less complication. But that's not, the route that is the easiest to structure is not always the best product for the marketplace. So it's a managed disposition process through that RFQ, RFP process, and we have worked through that in many other communities that initially there was places that developers wouldn't even think about going to. But once the community has established a vision, they put some resources, they've demonstrated that they've invested in themselves, all of a sudden you create interest by virtue of that show and sell. Because your RFQ, initial RFQ is that show and sell is like, all right, let, let us show this community to us, to you, because a lot of those qualified developers, they don't know all that much about Oneonta. Give them a little bit more information, give them some market data for them to, to chew over so that they can evaluate the development opportunity. I can assure you, based upon our relationship with developers, there would be many developers that would be attracted to this type of opportunity here in, in, in Oneonta. Next slide, please. So we don't need to go into the details of the RFQ, RFP, but the important thing is, is some of the things I touch upon with the community vision. You demonstrate site control. Site control is, a lot of communities put out RFPs and they don't have site control. And, and, and that's one of the, that's a real difficult part, yeah, attracting interest for sites that are privately owned, because once, once the city puts out an RFP for sites that are privately owned, those, then the property values tend to go up in, at least in the, in the minds of the, of the owners. And then again, with the RFP, you want to get them to provide more specifics in terms of what their program is and how they would, how they would finance it and their access to that capital. Next slide, please. Yeah, so I, I've covered both the RFQ and the RFP. So there's a few things that, you know, it, it's a, it's a process that there would need to be a considerable amount of input and guidance from local officials before you put, put it out there. But you don't have to get in too much detail with the RFQ because, again, they're only stating their qualifications. But you want to ask the developers to provide some level of their vision. So, so that's, that would be the general approach for those, those two parcels. And a while ago, we stayed, we, we put out an, an initial, sketched out an initial proposal on that RFQ, RFP process. But in, in discussions with the mayor and city administrator, you know, we, we also acknowledged the fact that there's a whole range of other services that could be involved. Those communities in which we're working and where the relationship works very productively is that when Grow America is, is viewed as an extension of their staff. So we're being responsive on a regular basis. We're not going to be here on, on a daily basis or a weekly basis, but we come, and we come in person as need be. And then our clients are really viewing us as an extension of their staff and added resource to help them think through issues and realize opportunities. Okay. And from an advisory standpoint, then next slide, please. An advisory standpoint, we, we're involved in just about everything under the community and, and community and economic development sphere, and we have been doing it for, for fifty years. I've personally been with NDC for twenty-five years, and our work and my team's approach has really covered a broad gamut of, of issues. Everything from doing microloans to, we're currently involved in putting together a financial structure for a mixed income, mixed use, transit-oriented development that is over two phases of five-hundred-million-dollar development. So it, it really runs a full gamut. And we, after COVID, we were doing a lot of microloans, and we changed the, the way in which we did lending because of the need to get funding out to, funding out to businesses. And then we did that with the recognition that it was a, with a higher risk profile. So we have a range of programs and services that we provide, and then again, we're activating those affiliated programs on an as-needed basis that could be part of the capital structure. So that development that I mentioned, the three hundred and, three hundred and forty unit reconversion of the former mill building, we helped structure the deal, turn it from a condominium to a rental. So we had to reprogram it, said, look, you can't do this all at once. We had to phase it out, and then we came up with a capital structure that allowed that development cost to be covered. And then, and once we put together the financial structure, we have that equity arm, that affiliated equity arm, and the developer says, well, you helped me put this development together. If you, if you have an equity division, we'd like to use you as a, as an investor. So we wound up being in the investor to purchase the tax credits as a limited partner, and we invested thirty-five million dollars into that development over the three phases. So our role changes, and in discussions, you know, you, you have Judy, a one-person planning shop, but there's, there's a lot of opportunities here. And, you know, a, a lot of communities see us as an alternative to hiring an additional full-time staff, because they have an opportunity to use us, not on, we're not working here full-time, but we're able to draw upon our experiences and deliver services ranging anywhere from putting together a capital structure to providing training, to doing some fund administration work. So our roles change based upon the facts and circumstances with each of our clients. So, but it starts with us listening and putting together a scope that meets the needs and, and, and works for you. So, and usually that, it's, takes place over a series of conversations before we reach a, we, we reach an agreed-upon scope and, and plan of action for us, how we can work to advance your economic development objectives and goals here in the city of Oneonta. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So questions from council?
Yes, we would have to tell you, and how much would that cost?
Well, that's, that's, we, was it that RFQ, RFP? Generally speaking, we, we, we put out our experience in working with other communities. If we just did that, that would probably be over a six, a six-month period. So usually that's, usually about sixty, seventy thousand dollars. General service contract, we're in the range of ninety to a hundred and twenty thousand, depending on the scope and the activities in which we're going to be involved with. So our general, general services contract provides a broad menu of services that be available over, and, and usually we're structuring those contracts over a one-year period of time. And the important thing is that they're cancelable on a. And the important thing is that they're cancelable on, with, on any, on a one-month notice. If, if our clients don't feel like they're getting their money's worth, they have the option of canceling those contracts on a one-month notice.
So, So just to clarify, I think it was your, one of your last points from your presentation.
Thank you very much, by the way. It's very informative. This is the second time I've heard it. I'm the chair of the finance committee, so this is, it's wonderful to meet you in person and to see in person.
I really couldn't see.
Yes.
Much better being here in person.
Yes.
Than talking to a screen.
So just to clarify the process, it really sounds as if it's council-driven, that we would be, as a council, deciding and having discussions about what kinds of services we would require, and then the overall direction of what we would want to accomplish. Is that, just to kind of clarify that point, is that really, we would be working with you kind of to synthesize our ideas, and you would be able to then help us see whatever projects we decided upon to fruition? Is that okay?
And specifically, we'd be determining those individual services in the larger scope of services that might be an assist to our planning and development department or any other, as, as our city administrator is rolling through some of the challenges that the city has, that you may be able to feed into as an assist. And then we would look at that and to answer Don's question, generally speaking, having identified those various services, then we could talk about what the costs of those services were, and we could figure out the return on investment as far as the council's concerned. Shannon?
But if so, say we pay you this money, it does not mean that you will invest in our community or that you will find people to invest in our community.
There's no guarantees. We've put together, well, in terms of that RFQ or RFP process, it's, these developments are financially challenging, so that's why you want to attract those that have done it and done it well in the past. But there's no guarantee about time in which private investment would, would happen. You, it starts with, it's, it's an investment in the future of demonstrating the opportunity for investment and development in, in Oneonta. And, and sometimes it happens quick, sometimes it happens slower. But think of it as an investment in, in the future for attracting the players that you want to be active here.
Would you say that the scope, I mean, I know they answered this, but I just want, it's a leading question. The scope of the two properties conjoined essentially provides more of an incentive for developers than either parcel by themselves. And we did, as I think I mentioned to you, we did go through a process, really not all that long ago, where we reached out to developers and showed them maps of those things that might be developed. Most of them, the city didn't actually have site control for, they weren't ours, and the things that actually wound up being of interest were none of them ours, and, and so really nothing came of that. So it's these two parcels together combined creates something larger, and is that really...
Yeah, the economies of scale and critical mass is very important for developers because they're going to make an investment of their time and financial resources in here. So it's, it's a more attractive when you have more opportunity, you know, two development sites to do. Doesn't necessarily have to meet together, but there's an opportunity for investment and, and really figuring out the, figuring out the challenges and addressing those challenges for, you know, a larger-scale development than a smaller-scale development.
Kevin, thank you for coming up here tonight. Appreciate your time. Sounds like you've invested some time in our community already. Much appreciated. To your right, on the back row, are three members of the Housing Commission. I guess timing is everything. They're going to be doing a presentation after yours to the council on a project that they've been working on for quite some time. So Stefan, in the far right corner there is our chairman, along with two other commissioners. And they've been identifying multiple properties or parcels throughout the city for residential, whether it be one, two, or three-family. I believe this project that we're looking at is, they've kept it open to a two-to-three-family opportunity in a lot of. So it sounds like your time today was spent looking at 2747 Market Street. Would you be interested in talking with the Housing Commission about the other parcels that they started identifying? They've been at this for probably a year, so I would imagine that it would be valuable time spent with you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, with, with every housing strategy, it's got to be comprehensive and looking at the broad range of housing opportunities. So that small-scale infill development approach, whether it be empty lots or underutilized residential buildings, that, that missing middle or the infill to complement perhaps a larger development strategy is, is absolutely critical to, for looking at the, the broad range of residential needs.
Right. I mean, the city owns something like 94 parcels already, and obviously not all of them would be developed, but there is a substantial list of properties that could be. So, you know, in the future, I would like to see, Judy's going to lead you throughout the city staff, but I would love to see you and the Housing Commission get together and see maybe if we can't do something together.
Yeah, we've put together a lot of programmatic designs of infill homeownership or infill rental programs for many of our client communities around the country.
Right. I mean, we're no different than any other committee. We have quite a few blighted properties.
Sure.
We fight the third party that holds on for the, for the financial institution. I don't know if this is something that you've helped other communities with, but I don't know the exact number, but we have quite a few of them splattered throughout the city. And so it sounds like you have 25 years of deep knowledge in this arena, and we truly appreciate your time, so thank you.
Yeah, we've been working with the city of Syracuse for several years on both major historic rehab of properties downtown to their infill development throughout the neighborhoods.
Right.
So a similar blended balance approach.
Right.
So Kevin, you've worked with any number of cities, 25 years of experience doing that. From your perspective, in this timeline that we're on right now, you're making this presentation, this is second presentation, you made one via Zoom to the Finance Committee. What would be typically your expectation of the next step?
That dialogue to continue, and, you know, we, we've discussed perhaps just a specific scope relative to the two subject properties on Market, on Market Street, the RFQ or RFP, or continue to talk through your needs or your areas of interest and see if, if you want to entertain a broader scope of something more akin to a general service contract.
Let me go to Cecilia.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so for example, to use Len's concern about the various properties that have been ran throughout the city, if we came to you as a council and said this is something that we would like to work on and figure out and strategize to eliminate or to work to eliminate, that would be something that you could potentially take up as part of that scope?
Sure.
Yeah.
Further questions, Kevin? I really, seriously, four and a half hour drive down. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
It's a very nice drive.
Thank you for being here.
Can you send us that presentation? So you have that information?
Yeah, Carrie has it. Thank you. Sure.
And we will be in touch, Kevin. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we are going to go to, well, we have no public hearings, and we have just a handful of folks here who might want to speak to us in terms of their petitions to council, and so as we do, and we are going to go to the boards and commissions right afterward.
Do those, yes?
We can, we can, it's not the structure of the agenda, but I can modify that. You've been sitting here a long time, everybody on hard benches.
Do you guys?
Yeah. Why don't, I'm happy to make that modification. Why don't we do that? Following up on Kevin Gramps, it's actually probably appropriate to hear from the Housing Commission, Stefan Marakovic, the chair.
Stefan Marakovic's chair of the Housing Commission. A little while back, we presented you with what's still titled, the land lottery sort of evolved, not much of a lottery anymore, and the whole concept behind it was identifying unutilized or underutilized vacant city-owned parcels and incentivizing developers to build housing on them by offering them the land for free in exchange for them building, we're calling it market-grade housing, for lack of a better word, but unsubsidized private housing for whoever needs it, gets the stuff back on the tax roll, opens up housing opportunities for people in our city, and more importantly, it's not grant-heavy, there's no, it's all just, there's no red tape, it's just private funding, and it's a lot more expedient, albeit on a smaller scale, sure, but, you know, eat the elephant one bite at a time. If we can get 10 houses built over the next two years, and maybe that's 10, 15, 20 units, that's a win, gets a bunch of stuff back on the tax roll, no pilots, none of that should be, I say should be pretty clear, I'm also not an attorney, I don't know, but it's, feels good to us. We kind of hashed it out a little bit more since we gave it to you last. We developed a scoring rubric for how we would analyze different people who presented projects, and we'd like to run with it, for lack of a better.
Len?
So why don't you take the council through kind of the process? So if the council said yes to this concept for this one parcel, what would that look like? What would you be going through? Because they're going to be asked questions by constituents and the general public. What does this mean? How's it look?
Sure. So our vision for it would be, we would, we were talking about forming a committee, but it would probably just be done as the Housing Commission, or if you felt it better to form a subcommittee of some kind, that's great, to market this opportunity to developers and put it in front of them, get their feedback on it, and have people submit plans for what they want to do. The plans come in, we analyze them all objectively against a rubric, and the best score wins. We wouldn't just give them the land, they would put up a performance bond for it that was measured in, you know, specific timeframes for project start, completion. I don't write performance bonds, I'm not really 100% on how we would structure it, but if we got that far, I'm sure that's a, you know, bridge we can cross. Yeah, we're not really asking the council to vote on anything yet. I guess the only vote would be if we did find a parcel and a developer to take this on, that'd probably be the vote surrounding providing them with the land. Yeah?
So why would we be interested in something along these lines in terms of what you proposed versus something like a community land trust model? So what would, what would be the advantage of this versus entering into an agreement like a community land trust?
I'm not super familiar with the community land trust model for timeframes and what can or can't be done on it. More importantly, you haven't. No one's done anything with this one for 30 years, just sitting here. If you think it would be more beneficial for the city to put it in a community land trust and build housing on it in a somewhat expedient manner, by all means, that'd be wonderful. We're not here to, not my land, we're trying to just put stuff back on the tax roll for you guys.
Can I ask a couple of questions about this particular lot that is in your handout? Do you know what it's currently zoned for?
One to three-family, what's the zoning on that?
Mixed use.
Three?
Mixed use.
Mixed use two?
Is it, is it 50, 50-foot furniture or 100 feet? I can't, there's no...
It's 50, like, it's 50 feet of...
50 by 150 or 50?
Yes. It didn't seem that they would need any variance kind of stuff to fit within setbacks, like a three-family home. Again, I didn't survey the lot, seemed that it would fit there.
The other thing is that on all the photographs that you have, there appears to be an encroachment on the parcel. It appears to be a building.
So the, all that stuff is pulled, I obviously from the GIS, and in Oscego County, for whatever reason, it's just been super off a lot of times lately to 10 to 15 feet.
I mean, it'd be nice if we knew before we sold it.
Yeah.
As to whether there was an encroachment on it, and a buyer might be concerned about that as well, so.
I mean, I...
Sure looks like it is on, on the documentation.
And if that's something that you guys want, we can definitely talk about that. I probably won't pay for the survey, but if that's something the city's willing to do, if they believe in the vision and the long-term benefit of it, sure. But the only way to actually know that for sure would be to find or have the survey.
Right. And I believe that could be a cost put to the developer.
Sure.
But Stefan hasn't mentioned yet, though, the performance bond is ready to get the value of the property. I think we're hanging a number of $35,000, and that provision would be done in one year. So from the issuance, we're looking to try and get this done as soon as possible to get it up, not getting it scaled down because, kind of to your question, not really putting a lot of weight to the trust, but it seems like things get stagnated, and this is just an opportunity, these folks are very motivated to take this project on and get it through. I know we started the conversation originally, David, with, you know, Greg and Chris, and making sure that there's no city infrastructure underneath this, and so we've been trying to check the boxes as we go along. But to your point about survey, yes, absolutely, like all property, you're going to want to get it surveyed, and that could be part of the cost.
Part of the reason I'm concerned about it is because before the city can give away current, to do with property, we have to, we have to make a valuation determination that we're getting that back from it. And, and my concern would be, again, sort of if we get halfway through the project, and there is a milestone that is accomplished, and there's a revision provision, or extended, it's a, it's a chicken and egg thing.
Absolutely.
On the one hand, we want to make sure it's done, on the other hand, we want to make sure that they have enough breathing room, but if they don't have enough breathing room, what is, what is our obligation? I mean, does the performance bond have to be enough to complete the housing code? You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Performance bonds ain't cheap because an insurance company wants to make sure that they've got a developer who has the credentials to actually, to actually go through the provision. It's like buying an insurance policy.
Correct. And that's why they decided to go down that path, because that would secure the city's interest because of those very reasons. Like, we really don't need a foundation hangout for the next 20 years as we push this issue.
What do you see as what jumps the line?
Right, exactly. So we want to make sure that this project is done, and they talk about it at length about trying, how long is that? So you're absolutely right, materials, as someone that's building a home right now, I can tell you that the materials are an issue, but if you don't stamp like a year on it, you could be two years, then three years, and so that's the, the starting point of the conversation is.
Do you consider any builders actually been approached?
No, no. They, the commission, sorry, talking for a minute. They wanted to make sure that the council was good with it, that's why there was a soft lay-in a couple of months ago. They've reworked it several times. This is the format, I shouldn't say they've worked it several times, they've tweaked little things here and there, but this is the format that they feel most comfortable in presenting for this, this lot. You know, it's a great lot, it's right next to Poison Girls Club, but also it's walkable to downtown, so they feel that this is a great lot to start off with, and I agree.
I think it's important to note, too, it's, it's not just about this one house. If this works, it can be part of a bigger vision for more of them.
Proof of concept.
Yeah, exactly. I think...
Yeah, please, please keep me in the loop.
Well, yeah, I mean...
This is the first time this parcel has ever been brought to my attention at all, and I got to make sure that everything that the city's doing on the legal side is cop setting.
So to, for the, just, I have a, I just question for you. With the performance bond, if they bond up for it and they fall short, the bond makes the city hold for the land, but then they own the land, yeah, it's back on the tax roll, but if it's got a half-finished house on it, that's, your concern...
Most performance bonds are issued in such a way that the work then has to be completed. The performance is an insurance policy that they would perform.
Well, your, your concern, so was the concern with the encroachment that the work couldn't be completed, or the developers decided not to?
Definitely. The enforcement of the performance bond, it always requires litigation unless... The enforcement of the performance bond, it always requires litigation, unless, unless the, somebody's walked away, then the, then the insurance company owns the parcel, um, it still has to be approved, there has to be COs, they still have to go through the entire process, so, and insurance companies' performance bonds are usually issued to large developers who can put up, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, they put up a hundred thousand dollar securities to the insurance company in exchange for the issuance of the policy. So, the, my concern about developers is, someone, a developer who has sufficient horsepower to do this may not be interested in developing a one-house development, the cost benefit analysis isn't there, that's why, so although it's a great concept, you may get a small, a small individual or group of people who are a local contractor who might be interested in the project, but whether they would have the wherewithal to cover the expense of the performance bond, that's why I was asking if there had been any actual conceptual discussions with anybody who would be able to comply with the requirements that you put here. Again, I think there should be a performance bond, I absolutely think there should be one, because otherwise we could be left with a situation where we have a half-built house on a piece of property that we owned and abandoned, that somebody's walked away from, but again, getting performance assets is a practical matter, um, it's expensive, um, and usually done by somebody who has horsepower behind it, for lack of a better...
Let me go to Jenny for a quick second.
I have a question, it's for dating, it's like, if the city acquired any of the parcels that they're interested in through tax sale years ago, does that complicate the transfer of...
No, it, it actually makes it easier, I mean, the, the, the transfer of taxes to parcels is never an issue, um, we have the, we can do a pinching, our current statute that we've changed, authorizes the, the city to sell for, for any reasonable reason, uh, but we always, but we always, whenever we're doing it, we have to do it for some articulable reason, as to why we do it for that purpose and not simply putting it up to auction to, to the public at large, uh, because that would be, then we know what the fair number value of the parcel is, um, so if we're gonna make, if we're gonna give to someone in particular, we have to, we have to make sure that, that it's a reasonable, positive enhancement for the community as a whole, which is why we're allowing somebody else to have, have a city asset. We don't normally get our city asset for free, um, we require payment, we can't, we can't, we can't give away a wastebasket without declaring a surplus and putting up a public auction or transfer from them, and if you're saying, oh, well, here's a developer's lot, let's give it away to, to, to somebody who said, yeah, I'll make it great, I'll make it pretty, um, that cannot be done, it has to be, we have to demonstrate in a reasonable, articulable way why, why we're treating this asset, why we're giving it away to somebody for a long-term benefit to the municipality that's greater than the value, at least equal to or greater than the value of what the asset is as a city.
Right, and they, they answered that question, they asked that question, and they answered the question, and that's how you get to this presentation.
Exactly, that, that's what I'm saying, is I don't see, I don't see any prohibition with moving, with, with, getting to this end if you can build in the safeguards, if you have somebody from the private sector who's willing to buy into these safeguards and then document it such a way that, you know, they build it in accordance with zoning provisions, that they build it to code, um, all those things will be required of anybody who's building these, you know, developing these properties.
Right, this wouldn't be handled in any other way of a private individual developing a lot. You still gotta submit plans, you still have to get the permit and process...
With the exception that the city has given them the land for free.
Right.
Uh, so, so we're, we're, we're in the land for free, but, but as part of the transaction, we're getting benefits back, which will guarantee that they come to benefit to the city on the long term, which is why we're allowing it to happen.
Right, I mean, it's only free if they actually perform, right? If they don't perform, we're gonna collect on the performance bond, right? So, you've said that multiple times, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to be part of the loop before we recommend, you guys gotta vote on it and...
Right, then it's a win for the city residents.
Then you don't get, we don't get sued for doing it.
So, 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 thank you very much. So, Stefan, what you're looking for, number one, is to, um, inform the council as to what the Housing Commission's been doing, and, uh, to get some general consensus from the council that we'd like to see you pursue this through the next multiple stages to find us in a place where we may be able to hack, an actionable, um, item for council. Is that about right?
It is, but now I feel that those next steps are not as clear, which is good, I mean, this is why we're here to talk through these things, like, you know, it's, yeah, I'm not trying to, like, this isn't for me.
So, does the clarification of this wind up being conversation within the context of the Housing Commission?
Yeah, I guess.
And then the correspondences with our city attorney and anybody else that, uh, you know, is going to clarify...
I mean, for us to move forward with it, the next step would be to start, um, gauging interest on it, but based off of the conversations with the city attorney, he doesn't want that to happen yet, from what I've gathered.
Again, this is a council consensus, appreciate that, city attorney.
Do you want me to do that against his guy?
We're not, we're not suggesting that, perhaps there's concurrent, um, work that can be done, that's your call within the context of the Housing Commission.
Maybe we're at a point where we're in agreement of this concept, of this presentation, in that the Housing Commission checks all of these boxes that David might have brought up, or maybe Judy would bring, bringing up, is that, is it ready to go out to start having a conversation with developers? Given that we have Judy here as a resource and David as a resource, maybe that's where I'm comfortable in moving this forward, if somebody needs a motion, or if we just, in general concept...
I, I think consensus is probably fine.
That, that the presentation and sitting down with our city developer and city attorney probably would be the next step, but I'm just wondering.
Does that feel like a direction for you and the Housing Commission that you're comfortable in?
Yeah.
Uh, and then, unless the council's got some, um, reason that we would not want to see the Housing Commission, first, yes, go ahead, Doc.
I'm not sure, I don't quite understand why we have this performance bond, and why can't we just sell the property to the developer? I, I don't understand, it seems more complicated than it has to be.
Allyn? So, I'm gonna steal a little something from Cecilia. If I wanna give candy in my house, I'll give candy in a house. If I buy this property, you're not gonna tell me to put a house on it, you're gonna tell me what kinda house to put on it. So, the Housing Commission was charged with trying to create more housing, more opportunities, so it's not just a single family, they're going after a double or a triplex, and that's the concept, so, in this particular case, in order to have any say on what actually that happens on that property, the city needs to go down this path.
Okay. Um, the other, it's a related question, and that is the precedent of giving the city asset away, and I think, as discussed, we don't usually do that, and I would be reluctant to set a precedent.
So, it's only free if they actually develop the land? The only way that it'd become technically free is they actually gonna put a duplex or a triplex on that parcel, which we sell to now three families of water and sewer, and it gets, it's on the tax, right now, we collect zero for this parcel, along with ninety-seven other parcels, but, yeah, so it's, it's an investment more than free.
But, are we setting a precedent that could be a problem?
It's a good precedent to set, maybe, like, if you're willing, if you get a bunch of people that are trying to develop in your city, and the cost to the city is land that's doing nothing for you now.
And ultimately, what we're saying is, Stefan and the Housing Commission, please pursue and, and, and provide the detail that's necessary, determine the issues that, um, are resolvable, determine those that aren't, uh, and then at that point, the council has something that can be put in front of it for its action, and so, that's, that's where we'll get to that conversation. Stefan, anything else? Yes, Jenny? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I just, thank you, I just have another question, I'm thinking audit procedures as far as transferring the city property to another person at zero cost, how, what procedures are gonna be followed so we can show whatever auditor's looking at it, that whoever we decide to transfer the property to, we'll select it based on what criteria, and, and how we will be able to make the selection?
Is there a rubric that is...
There you go.
Thank you.
Cecilia?
Well, I wanted to just put forward, potentially to the Housing Commission, to, um, just expand potentially the toolkit of resources available for these unused lots, um, that are currently time-stagnant, that the land trust model, um, can actually be a really wonderful resource for communities, and that it could be something, another pathway for these lots that the commission could look into, as something that could be beneficial both for residents as well as for, you know, the wider community of the city.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mean to, um, like, marginalize the land trust before, that wasn't my intention.
No, no, no.
Like, I genuinely believe in what they do.
Yes.
Uh, I think this conversation was born more from just the exhaustion around, you know, just anything other than just like easy, clean, private development money that can happen quickly, so, and it's a smaller scale, and we won't charge you sixty thousand dollars to do it.
So, so Stefan, it sounds like the Housing Commission has, um, plenty of work in front of it, uh, and it's one of the things that we really like to have is an activated commission, and you guys certainly are, and I appreciate that, um, and I thank all members of the Housing Commission that are here, uh, and Mike, do you have your handout?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Were you finished? Okay.
I am now.
Just wanna say, I don't feel like you've got a lot of enthusiasm here, so I just wanted to say, I'm really excited this is moving forward, and thank you guys for your hard work.
Yeah, we're, we're all, we all want the same thing.
That's right.
It's like, for the city to do well, so it's not, I don't want us to feel like we're trying to convince you of something else.
All right. Thank you very much, Stefan, and thank you again to the Housing Commission members that are here, I much appreciate it.
There's two more here, we'll...
Um, we're going to, um, when we are on the other side of, um, the Senator City Administrator Report and those few remarks that the mayor even has any, we'll take a bathroom break, okay? So, we'll, just so the, those who are wondering where we might be going with that. But, uh, in the meantime, uh, there are no public hearings, and, um, we'd like to hear from any petitioners that have anything they'd like to bring forward, uh, and if you do, please identify yourself and where you live, and, uh, three minutes is great, do we have anybody who is looking to speak?
I think so, I'm making eye contact with you so that you can have my opportunity.
Yes, you wanna send at the, uh, at the podium, that way we have you recorded for those who tune in later on?
Hi, some of you know me already in different ways, um, I was living in Franklin for four years, and then I moved to Oneonta, so I've been in Oneonta for thirty-seven years.
And you'll just identify yourself and where you live.
I will, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
But I wanted to say that first because, um, we age, we look different, and we don't function in the same capacities as we have in the past. That all being said, my name is Monet Rothenberg, I live in Ward Eight, this is my council member representative, I live on Watkins Avenue, and I am a homeowner, taxpayer, and I came with this concern that I will make very brief. So, I'm going to, and this was a very interesting meeting, thank you all, because you filled in a lot of details as to what I had been observing, and I realize I need to subscribe to the Daily Star so I can keep up with all these meetings. Um, so, as a homeowner, I propose that the owners of short-term rentals be informed that, if they haven't already, that if their renters are playing baseball in their backyard, having batting practices, though it is a batting cage, and all that is around them are other people's fences, that, um, they may be responsible for the damages. Now, I don't know if that's already in there, when this was all developed, but I am pointing this out. Uh, stray balls, whether they are foul, or, you know, the children have decided that the parents say it's okay for them to play, um, I am not obligated to retrieve the balls. And, um, although being a good neighbor, representing Oneonta community, and saying, to the owner who I know has spent a lot of money to make this property what it is today, and I agree that it brings commerce and money to the community, however, if I have to have stuck balls come across the fence, and if I say to the owner of it, well, you know, I've sent a lot of wiffle balls across the fence, and he says, well, those don't do too much damage, so if your lattice on top of your fence was, uh, damaged, I can't see what you're complaining about, and if I say, well, then, hard balls that come across, let's say Cooperstown All-Star Village, and I've sent you photographs, video, and you can hear what's going on, and as I said to him, as I walked in the backgra, backyard, this is just anecdotal, uh, with someone, and they heard it, and they said, is it the children's voices that bother you? And I said, no, it's not the children's voices, it's children's voices, I love it, it means community. What is bothering me is the crack of the bats on the balls, and then seeing the damage. So, I brought my, um, my evidence, this is not a legal, uh, thing, but, you know, I wanted you to see what I'm dealing with. Okay, so it is, it, you know, it's not my, it's my prerogative to return the balls, but what I am concerned of is if the agent or the owner is not willing to comply because they're absent, and I am forced to bring this to light, to seek redress, and perhaps find out, is there redress, and is there a fine for someone who does not respond and tells me, oh, well, uh, how can you prove it? Then I'm forced to come into a public arena, speak to my peers, speak to my fellow Oneontans and say, I have a problem. Any questions?
So, I guess, I, I'm not clear, what are you actually asking the council tonight? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, it's a pleasure to meet you. Uh, I am asking, are there rules and regulations about these short-term rentals? Are the owners or their agents responsible for damage that is done to people whose property is adjacent? There may be other things that, uh, you know, go on. I haven't called the police to say anything, but adjacent neighbors have told me that they too have had problems with children running into their backyards, groups of them, because they wanna retrieve their balls, and, uh, it disturbs the people who are living there, it also disturbs me as their neighbor, because I have a voice, I will speak, I wanna find out what are the rules, what are our, what are the things that we can do, as opposed to calling our police who are already overwhelmed with serious issues? And if an individual like myself speaks to someone, I, you know, choose to speak, you know, this way so you hear me clearly, but if I'm speaking to someone and saying, would you please, uh, be aware that this is going on, whether it's the renter there, because it changes from week to week to week, or to the owner to say, this is a problem, I want some, some idea of what I can do in order to remedy this, short of going to arbitration, or going to small claims, or making a thing about this, because the short-term rentals do have a place and a purpose, and it's very positive, unless someone doesn't know that the residents who are around them, this is their home, this is not a batting cage, this is not the Cooperstown All-Star Village or Dream Parks, this is our home, and you are welcomed into our home as long as you follow the city's rules.
So, Monet, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, and, uh, Lynn actually is Chair of the Legislative Committee, and we might have some conversation about how we can get that information back to you in terms of where the city is relative to that, does that sound good?
That sounds good. Lynn, did I answer your question?
You did, um, but did we have her contact information?
Code of laws. Um, if you wanna write down your email address, I have the short-term rental code pulled up, and I'm happy to email it to you so that you can...
Thank you. Does it have anything in there about... Thank you. Does it have anything in there about what we can do?
We can, I mean, we can discuss that outside of the meeting.
Right.
But I'm asking, is it in there?
The ideal is that that's what we do. So, and Katie's also on the Legislative Committee, so thank you very much.
I'm sorry, your voice faded, Mark.
I said Katie also sits on the Legislative Committee. She's right on it, and she will provide that to you, and hopefully that resolves some of the concerns. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Monet.
And thank you very much.
All right.
Nice meeting you all. So, thank you for listening to me when I called.
Yes.
Very good.
Have we, have we any other...
Do you have an email address, please?
Have we any petitioners to follow, Monet? All right.
Okay. I'll give you my...
Do you want to write it down with us? And then Donald gets it to me, and I'll email it to you. And then if you have any questions or concerns, you can email me back, and then we can, you can come to Legislative Committee and have a discussion.
Very good.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you very much.
Very.
You're welcome.
And is there any correspondence?
We got five.
Okay.
Sorry.
That was out loud, yeah.
No, it's wonderful. It's already a very long meeting, which is kind of wild.
All right. From the Cooperstown All-Star Village, "Members of the Common Council, on behalf of Cooperstown All-Star Village, I want to express our strong support for the city's continued investment in downtown entertainment and public programming. These initiatives have played an important role in shaping Oneonta into a welcoming, family-friendly destination, not only for residents but for the thousands of visiting families who come to our region each summer. The daily plaza programming, ambassador program, and concert series have brought new life to Main Street that benefits everyone. From local small businesses to regional employers like us who rely on Oneonta's vitality is a key part of the guest experience. When families leave with a positive impression of Oneonta, they tell others, and the economic impact ripples well beyond downtown. We view the city's commitment to a vibrant downtown as an investment in the long-term economic health of the region, not an expense. Cooperstown All-Star Village is proud to be a part of this community, and we look forward to continued collaboration with the city to enhance the experience for all who visit and live here. Thank you for your continued leadership and dedication to making Oneonta a place we can all be proud of. Respectfully, Dan Hooper, General Manager." That was very timely. Thank you. From Alex Fisher, "Dear City Council, I have read the Resolution on Immigration drafted by the Atsigo Refugee Resettlement Coalition, and I agree with every word. I hope the council will adopt the resolution in its entirety." From Suzanne Miller and Walter von Sal, "Resolution Before Common Council. Dear Mayor Drennic and members of the Oneonta Common Council, we urge each of you to strongly support the City of Oneonta Resolution on the federal government's seizure, detention, and deportation policies. We think it is important to take a strong stand when our federal government is engaging in actions that undermine democracy and violate due process. Let's stand up as a community that welcomes immigrants and all their contributions and protects them from the violence many in the U.S. have endured. Thank you for your support on this important issue." This is from Liz Fink, "Dear Code Enforcement Officer Hester, members of the Planning Commission and members of the Common Council, the Sixth Ward Neighbors United respectfully submits this letter regarding the possible proposal to retain a firm to conduct the State Environmental Quality Review Act (SECRA) analysis for the Solstice Commons Project proposed by Rehabilitation Support Services (RSS). We strongly urge the City of Oneonta to engage an independent, conflict-free firm to conduct the SECRA review. Specifically, we request that the selected consultant have no current or prior professional, contractual, or financial affiliation with RSS, its subsidiaries, partners, or any entity that has previously performed services for RSS on this or other developments. The integrity of the SECRA process is fundamental to ensuring that all environmental, social, and community impacts are thoroughly and objectively evaluated. Public confidence in the outcome depends upon the independence and neutrality of the reviewing entity. Any firm that has had prior involvement with RSS or has provided related services would present at minimum a perceived conflict of interest and at worst a substantial one. Accordingly, we respectfully request that the city disclose publicly all firms under consideration for the SECRA work and any potential conflicts of interest prior to selecting the firm, require certification from the selected firm referring no prior or current relationship with RSS or related entities, provide the public, namely the Sixth Ward Neighbors United, with an opportunity for comment before final selection of the SECRA consultant. This request is made in the interest of fairness, transparency, and adherence to the procedural intent of SECRA under NYCRR Part 617. The Sixth Ward Neighbors United believe that a transparent, independent process serves not only the community but also the city's own long-term interests in accountable governance and sound planning. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. We respectfully ask that this correspondence be entered into the public record for any proceedings related to the Solstice Commons Project. Sincerely, Liz Fink." And from Randy Maritello, "To the members of Oneonta City Council, I want to start by thanking the council members and mayor for attempting to pause and restart the conversation with the neighbors of the Oneonta Municipal Airport. I think it is one small step in the right direction, but there are many more miles to go. There are a few sticking points that will take much discussion and possibly negotiation, but there is one that really stands out to me. At a recent council meeting, the engineering firm representatives from Paso Rob Associates stated that they are only seeking quote-unquote "air rights" above the 34-to-1 approach imaginary line. This sounds so unintrusive and barely an infringement. The problem is that this airspace can only be maintained by controlling the property beneath it, so this is an issue. If an entity has an easement on my property, then my property is not really mine. I view my relationship with this land as that of a steward and protector of it, and I have paid for the right to do so for many years now in mortgages, taxes, hard work, and sacrifice. I feel the need to point out again that as long as there is talk of easements, there is really nothing to talk about. I am hopeful that the conversation will continue to change, and we can talk about other options. I know that they exist. I still question the necessary existence of the airport at all, but as long as it does not infringe upon my rights, I can continue to live with it. Thank you. Randy Maritello, Atsigo County Wilderness and Watershed Coalition."
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. We're going to move on to our Finance and Human Resource Committee report, and if you...
Well, I'm wondering how much detail I should go into with the Acadia proposal that they sent. Only, I'm hesitating only because there are copies for me to read. I guess I could just give a quick... So, we heard, so the bulk of the meeting for the Finance Committee centered around the presentation from Acadia Energy. And everybody should have a copy of the proposal for you to look at. It was a really, I thought, compelling proposal, and it's going to be a proposal that we will look at again after we get some feedback from the Climate Smart Communities people. So, maybe I'll just leave it at that, that if you have questions based upon taking a look at the proposal, you can go from there. But all the details that they went over are available in what you've been provided. So, and the rest of the meeting was fairly succinct. We went over a few budget contract approvals, and the main focus was on the Acadia proposal. And it would, essentially, it's a fascinating proposal because it will allow the city's electricity bills to decrease. And there is, as you just mentioned, actually, this is an important detail. There is a, this is time limited, because the recent federal changes to tax credits for solar projects are set to expire. There's a new expiration date, and that is in July of 2026. So, there's a need for Acadia to kind of move their project and their interest in us and in the City of Oneonta along, given that they have this July deadline, to have the project underway.
Questions? Yes, I'll start with Mike.
Just to say, could you clarify, July 28th to be in process?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, to have it substantially underway.
Okay. And in short term, you're talking about it next week at Climate Smart Community meeting, and they're coming back?
Yes, and they gave a presentation, yep, on Zoom.
Okay.
They came in person. They also drove about four hours to get here, so, yeah.
Okay. So, after Climate Smart Communities, it's supposed to, you know, come back to the council, is that...
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Lynn?
Page 13 of our 99-page packet, by the way. I didn't find it. Not that I don't want the conversation to continue, but it's just a, do we have to do an RFP? Because this is only one company. Do we know if there's others that are out there that might want to join in and maybe offer us a little bit more money? I see what they're asking us, Cecilia, and it's good. I think overall, out of the 20 years, we're going to get like $288,000 out of them. I looked up on my app, not with Candy, but it says the value of the land's about $280,000 right now. So, just a quick question. And another one was, why isn't Climate Smart Task Force on our calendar? Because I actually went looking for that after she said that.
It's not a council committee and not a city border commission. It's kind of like an ad hoc established...
It's a task force.
Yeah.
Yeah. But do you have a liaison? They have a council liaison, so don't we strengthen the need to have it on our calendar?
Am I a liaison? I'm just a member.
You're a member? I thought you were a liaison. You're a member.
Yep. There is a...
You're just a...
That's, yeah.
You're just a member.
The Environmental Commission has a council liaison.
Which I am. So, the Climate Smart Community Task Force was originally like a subcommittee of the Environmental Board, but they've kind of gone out to do their own thing, you know? It's not like they report back to us and maybe issue them.
Any further questions or comments? Cecilia, thank you very much. And we'll move on to Lynn and the Legislative Committee report, please.
Two hours and two minutes. We met yesterday. We spoke at length about the tobacco-free legislation. I apologize, I can't think of Jennifer's last name right now.
Hill.
Hill.
Hill, thank you. And Mike and Elaine were also in the, in the chambers yesterday, which were, Mike was, Elaine, not that you weren't helpful. Elaine actually brought the hard work that her committee had done to legislation, and that's what we used as bases. And then Mike was scrubbing up spreadsheets for us, and we actually found out, I think there's something like just under 30, 30 places that sell tobacco and/or vape in the city of Oneonta.
No, in city or town.
City or town. The 13820.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, that was interesting and disheartening also. But, yeah, so that was the basis. So, we're going to keep working on it, and hopefully we'll be bringing it back to council as well.
Good. Thank you for, all right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our approval of warrants with motion number one, that the Common Council approves the warrants totaling $1,241,756.10, and that the same be placed on the Finance Director's desk for payment as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don, followed by Lynn.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester-Rothburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
As I tend to, I want to just make mention of Anthony Heath, who is another community member who's volunteering to assist the city as a member of the Zoning and Housing Board's Appeals. That's motion number three. But in the meantime, motions number two through nine are our consent agenda, and do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, followed by Mike, and we can call it.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester-Rothburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Then it takes us to our City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Sales tax received in August totaled $590,000. That's $167,000 or 22% less than 2024. Year-to-date, we're at just under $4.6 million. Year-to-date as in through August, which is $84,000 or 1.8% greater than 2024. As a reminder, the 2028 budget includes $5.28 million. We're still on track to exceed that. 2026 budget, which we're discussing later tonight, will and does include $6.3 million. Pavement markings are being done this week. They continue Spruce Street, Center Street, Fourth Street, Main Street, East End, bike lanes and sharrows, we repainted. That was a Nixol that went out earlier today. You may have seen it. Water distribution system leaks, I have an update there. I'm happy to report that the issue we were seeing, we were pumping significantly greater amounts to the high-service area on a regular basis from the water treatment plant, has been resolved. We saw significant improvement, in particular after Harbor College repaired a leak on their campus in late September. The city also repaired, as you all know, I'm sure, recently a break that was on the SUNY campus on a city transmission main on E-Storm Drive. Previously in September, we isolated a leak in the rail yard, so we eliminated that. We also had a company come in and do our annual fall system-wide leak detection, identified three different service leaks, one of which is private. We've sent a letter to the owner to address that, two of which are being, or have been repaired or will be repaired by the city. They're on the city side of the service. We've had water main leak that was repaired on Baker Street, several hydrant leaks and hydrant valve leaks repaired as well. We're under investigation. So, I think we've made great progress. Thank you to Scotten and Staff at Hartwick for taking care of their issue. And I think effectively, we were in a much better position now than we had been over the summer. Wilbur Lake Reservoir is at 57 inches below the spillway as of yesterday. And a couple of weeks ago, it was about the same level, 57 and a half inches. So, with the rain, we were kind of holding steady. 74 inches below would be the point at which we would send out notifications to the public asking for voluntary conservation measures. Waste Water Treatment Plant Tunnel Shoring Project is complete, so that might mean it could be a time in the future. We could schedule a tour down there. We talked about that. Just as a reminder, we did a water treatment plant last spring. We talked about doing the wastewater plant this fall. So, if anyone's interested in that, email me, and we'll start talking about the dates. West Dot Latretany Wall is mostly complete, other than the railing, which is, I think, on its way, which will be installed soon if it's here, a few weeks, I believe, roundabout. You've noticed is the final paving is going on. That's night work, the pavement markings as well. So, I think that's on track to be completed by early November. Wilbur Park Playground's shade structure, DWS, installed concrete footings. They'll be installing the structure itself once the concrete curing process is complete, about a week or so. And they'll also begin demolition of the waiting pool at Wilbur Pool in anticipation of FOS donation to complete the splash pad that they've been raising money for next spring. They confirmed with us that they're going to hit their goal, and that's something that will go forward. So, DWS planned will be doing the demolition of the existing pool this fall. So, that's all I had. Ask you any questions?
Questions for... Lynn?
No questions. Just want to compliment you and Chris on your approach to that major water leak up on SUNY Oneonta campus. Obviously, you did the right thing by personally walking the announcement to each one of the homes. That was well-received, and I actually didn't receive any negative comments or response to your action, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Glad to hear that.
Cecilia?
So, I was just curious, what, maybe this isn't the form to talk about the details of that water may break. I was just curious about what happened with that. And then I did actually have a couple of residents wondering about the no-longer boiling water notice. They thought that maybe the city had forgotten about notifying people that they didn't have to boil water anymore. And so, I was just curious kind of what, if there's a way, if this happens again, to kind of keep people a little bit more informed about, you know, here's, we're in the process of testing and so forth. And I did post on my social media different, you know, details, but I was also kind of confused. So, I was just curious kind of, I guess first, what happened with the water may break, and then, and then if there's a way to kind of bring the public a bit more in on the process of what it takes once there's a break for boiling water and then not boiling water. I had to explain to a few people that it's, you know, takes a few days for the testing to be completed and for them to be, you know, reassured that there isn't contamination, so.
Yeah. Chris, do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to take that out?
So, water main, as we all know, we have 66 miles of Asian infrastructure. A lot of our infrastructure is over 100 years old, cast iron pipe. This particular line was a 12-inch line, had a 13-foot crack in it, and it was 13-foot deep. It took quite a bit of time to repair. The reason it was so deep is because the college built parking lots over top of it. I highly recommend in the future, if we have developments near our water main, that we don't allow filling that kind of material over top of our water main. And if they want to fill, that they should relocate the water main so it's only five or six foot deep. Depth, that kind of depth is very dangerous, risky, or is wide excavation puts our crew at risk. Depths of, that kind of depth is very dangerous, risky, or is wide excavation puts our crew at risk.
Was SUNY notifying with that? Did they, are they aware of that?
Yeah. Um, as far as the, uh, boil water notice, we had, uh, the test, uh, passed on Saturday morning and Carrie issued a nixle in Facebook post saying that it was.
With the minutes. Yeah, yes, and I got that, yeah.
We did, we tried, I mean, everything we could. We put the nixle signup information on the hand-delivered sheet so that hopefully people would see that and sign up to receive that. I don't know that we got, when we got back out the hand-deliver, it wasn't on the weekend. Uh, we didn't want to call in and incur more overtime to do that, so we came back on Monday and we. So the only other thing we can do differently in the future would be to, you know, schedule overtime to come in to, to hand them out again. I would think. I don't know, Chris, if you have any other opportunities, but that would probably be the only thing we can do different.
Okay. Yes.
Just a question, a quick fear idea whether it'd be possible to post, like, post a public notice somewhere like in, you know, at the end of that neighborhood so that people, they didn't get the nixle with, you know, water, or water of the, uh, lifted or whatever.
I mean, that's kind of what social media is for, in a sense, that people don't necessarily have access to it, right?
Further questions for Greg? Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate it. Um, just for council's, um, information, uh, the ADA committee has now moved to the priority placed in my agenda. Uh, and so I'll be, um, looking to see if I can pull together nominees for, um, council consideration by November fourth, so we can move that along. And, uh, and I'm interviewing a couple of, uh, potential members to replace, um, Martine Camerbeek, who has stepped down from the Airport Commission. I hope to have a name for council as well so they can keep that at its full strength. And, uh, we'll certainly, um, miss Martine in that role, um, but very much understand his rationale for stepping down. So that's all I've got. Uh, if we could take a break and be back by twenty after, so when the big hand's on the floor. Okay, and we'll, uh, restart. We're back. Are we recording?
Yes.
All right, we're into our discussion agenda with motion number ten that the common council approves the renaming of the Community Development Department as the Planning and Development Department and incorporation of all functions of the Code Enforcement Office within this department and approves the associated organizational chart and staffing plan as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Len.
No, actually, Mayor, I, before we go into this motion, I would like to call for an executive session to talk about personnel.
We have a second? Katie, seconds?
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Waltruso?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
No.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
While we're at it, can I, I also have a matter of these to go into executive session with our communication. Can we wrap those?
Combo that?
If you didn't get, get it, you can only have one executive session.
Yeah.
Add that over with?
I, I would presume that that works. Do we need any of the motion to make that happen? If we just say yes?
It's included in the, in the, in the, no one has an objection, let's do it all at the same time.
All right.
So for the executive session to qualify, the city attorney with the city administrator, the council and the mayor will be included?
HR, no? Nobody else? Okay. All right, thank you.